This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, perfect timing. Thanks. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming tonight. Tonight is our Board of Trustees' regular meeting to be held tonight, September 2nd, 2025, at 5 o'clock. We call a meeting to order, Dave.
Yes. Jill Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Johnaway?
Here.
Mr. Molyneux?
Here.
You're here.
Semple, here. All right. We'll stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any questions from the Board of the Approval of Minutes for August 19? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnaway?
Yes.
Yes. Any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening, Oliver? Okay. Hearing of the public for agenda items only. I see we've got a handful of folks to discuss the solar panels tonight. Is that something you guys want to hear now, or do you want to hear for the discussion of the resolution?
I think the discussion on the resolution.
Okay. Hang tight with us, guys, or whoever's here for that this evening. The Room Service Department, Daryl, come on down.
Yeah, she'll do.
Did I say Daryl? Sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry about that. You guys look nothing alike. I'm sorry.
Resolution 25-155, this is to award bid to Stevens for household pickup. We received two bids from our current provider, the IRS, and Stevens is full. They came in with an aggregate total of $500 per plan cheaper.
Any questions from the Board? I'll offer Resolution 25-155 to award bid to Stevens for household pickup.
I'll second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnaway?
Yes.
Mr. Molyneux?
Yes. Thanks, Rob. All right, Dave. Fiscal officers are starting up a little bit here.
In the July analysis, and had a chance to review, I'm sure, and I think our funds are not comfortably good. And if you don't have any questions, I'll just move forward with the resolution that I have. And it's our Resolution 25-156, so Greece, it's township appropriations from unaccommoded balances, and there's quite a few there. I think you've had a chance to review them, so I'd ask that resolution be approved.
Any questions? I'll offer Resolution 25-156, township appropriation from accommodated balance.
I'll second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Molyneux?
Yes.
That's all I have.
All right, Daryl, do you want to come on down? Evening.
Did you file a public hearing?
That'd be great. Okay, I'd like to open a public hearing at 5:03 with regards to text amendment zoning resolution, Section 822. So I think instead of opening this up right now, I'd like you to explain the resolution of what we're trying to accomplish this evening, and then allow for the public to sit. So we're going to close the public hearing at 5:04, and we'll open the public hearing afterwards.
I think he'd be part of the public hearing because he's presenting the evidence.
Okay, very good. All right.
He's providing information.
Okay, Daryl, you can present the evidence through the public hearing then.
Sure. So Section 822 of the Savannah Township Solar Resolution allows for solar panels to be placed on any accessory building or principal building in any zone of the township. So panels integrated on the surface area of the construction may be located on any part of the road. However, separate flush mounted solar panels may only be located on a rear or side fixing. We have received a lot of requests even in the past year, year and a half, for front-facing schmellin' solar panels. Solar panel permits are very tight places, but some of them from the front have gone for the appeal to the BCA unsuccessfully. The BCA will hold up the zoning resolution unless it's a hardship. So we started looking at possibly changing the zoning resolution, looked at what other jurisdictions do, and actually, many of them don't even regulate solar panels at all. And those that do, very few prohibit them street-facing or front-facing. So we're looking at removing that part of Section 822. It's equal to B1A2 specific.
One more, say that again, Daryl. One more time.
Section 822, B1A2. It states separate flush mounted solar panels may only be located on the rear or side fixing. As with any of the zoning regulations, homeowners association, after all the rules that go beyond the zoning regulations, thus, we're not allowing solar panels or not allowing front-facing. And we've just got a planning commission, planning staff, and the planning commission itself that can be approved as the Savannah Township zoning commission.
Okay. In continuance of the public hearing, we've got a handful of folks this evening, and thanks for coming, that would like to speak for or against the project. I'm just going to go down and listen. If we could, I'd ask you to introduce yourself. Again, thanks for coming. The address of where you live or where you stay, and your opinion, if it's a, if we're all kind of going down the same path, if there's something very common that's already been brought up, I ask you maybe to mention something that's not as common there, and then we'll kind of move on from there, okay? So I'll just start right at the top. Yvonne Trevino?
Good evening.
Hi, Yvonne.
Hi, Yvonne Trevino, 9218 Broadway Court. I just have a few thoughts and comments regarding the solar panels. Certainly, we support renewable energy and understand its importance, but certainly, I think putting the solar panels on the front of homes changes the aesthetics that we have come to appreciate perhaps out in the township. Certainly, in subdivisions, we adhere to a certain look, and certainly, we don't oppose, I guess, solar panels in the rear or the side, but certainly do not want it on the front. I think that just changes the aesthetics of certain neighborhoods. So this isn't a way to, I guess, be against renewable energy. It's more about just making sure that it maintains the aesthetics that we have come to, I guess, appreciate.
Well, thanks for your comments. Joe Emmons? Hi, Joe.
Hello. My name is Joe Emmons. We live at 5446 Country Road Lane. Couple things that I would say, you know, I hear what Yvonne has already said, but we also have looked as an HOA, and we are restricted by law that we cannot place unreasonable restrictions without a three-quarter rope of the members. So it's not as simple as saying the HOA can just simply say, we don't approve this plan, and we don't come out of your house. We have to have a rope of the membership to specifically state that for that plan or that group that we enjoy would govern. So it's not simply a matter of saying, apply, we like it or we don't. We have to have those written into our agreements. The other thing that I'm concerned about is if we come to a point where someone would object to our restrictions, that the law currently says reasonable, which tells me that anyone that wants to be an attorney or wants to fight it, then it just goes out of the hour, and what's reasonable and what's not. But I also agree with Yvonne that we bought into the neighborhood and into the township based on aesthetics. And it's a beautiful area to live. What we think is should be got there.
Appreciate your comments, Joe. Thank you. Paul Long?
I'm trying to think if I have some different day applications. Do you want to hear from me? I've got some really good.
We miss you.
I know. You've heard me speaking. I know. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, they're all the same as Yvonne touched on.
Paul, if you don't mind, yeah. She only did this for like 10 years with us.
Oh, 9230, great.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Hi.
Well, just to mention, Yvonne said it's not that we're against renewable energy. We have somebody in there now already that has solar panels on the backyard house, and we have no problem with that. It's just, from the aesthetic standpoint, just, I'm not a fan of the front, and I don't think most people are in their neighborhoods, and you all live in the township, and you all have to, you know, just change your whole collection of trees and everything part of your neighborhood, else you put all panels on the front. And that's where it takes, so that's it. But yeah, we're not against it. Like I said, we have somebody in there that has panels on the back. No problem. It's not, you don't see it coming down the road. You know, in the back, it's just different from the front.
Sure.
The section. That's the only difference.
Well, thanks for coming back.
Yeah.
Paul Hackett? Hi, Paul.
Thanks for letting me speak here.
If you don't mind, Paul, just for the tape.
I'm sorry. Paul, I'm with 9216 Southern Lane, and the alleged law. Couple of things I want to mention. One, I work for an air, I own a local energy company here, not energy producing, but energy safe. And I've got a long experience, over 25 years of energy safe projects throughout the world, and in particular, in North Bay. And I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly of solar. It works really well where the justification's there, like in California, the way that the energy costs five times what they are here. I really get a lot of sunshine. But a lot of times, in areas where that isn't the case, the sales guy selling the system tends to overpromise and underdeliver. But I know the Saturnium is really not for me to tell you that the ugly is solar. I believe it works in the right place. I'm against it in the terms of what my friends here have said, that it changes the whole look of a neighborhood. And I've been in neighborhoods in Hawaii where the whole neighborhood changes in its appearance once solar stops running. And I don't favor that. I miss not. Well, I moved here in 2033 years ago, because I really liked my solar. When I moved from England 35 years ago, and the Paris World, off of the hills, the wedding, this was the place I wanted to be in, and I hope we don't change that.
And we appreciate your business in the township too, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess with that being said, I'm going to close the public here, close the public hearing at 5:13 for any discussion from the Board. Do you guys have any questions or?
So, Daryl, if someone wants to put these up, do they have to get a permit from zoning to, you know, erect this structure, and will we be approving them on a case-by-case basis, or if we put this in, somebody can put up a solar panel wherever they want it?
Well, they can already, if you're talking about freestanding solar panels, they can all already do those. These are for the flush-mounted rooftop ones, and yes, they'll require zoning permit and a building permit for a discounted building. I wanted to mention too, it seems like the main complaint is aesthetics. I get that, but that's not what zoning is about. Zoning doesn't regulate aesthetics. Somebody could build the ugliest house or garage painted full orange stripes. We don't have any regulation on that. That's kind of where the HOA is coming.
I know my, I know my club of township just approved no solar panels for businesses, and they are looking that route towards the houses for the, I think the question that I have is the, this could be a John Braw question, if you're, oh, you're here, John. Thanks for coming, our legal staff. If a homeowner's association is already put in play, and then, then they're going to have to go back three-quarters, for example, in one subdivision, it may be half for another subdivision, it might be eight or 90% for another subdivision. There's going to be, there's a lot of added costs in changing those HOA, HOAs. I mean, there is. And I don't know if that, is that a burden on the developers that are investing in our township, you know, they have to change, you know, they're going to change all these regular, a lot of our homes are newer, right? And sun makes a difference. I don't have any sun where I'm at. I don't have a bunch of trees. That's not going to make any sense. So I think really, what you're going to see, this is in the newer subdivision areas of our township, where there's not a lot of trees, and it can take a lot of sun. So I guess, I guess my long-winded story here is it seems like it might be cumbersome on behalf of the developer and builder, the guys, the ladies and gentlemen that are investing in our township, to change all those different regulations in their subdivision docs, in their subdivision bylaws.
And you know, if I might add to that, not everybody has an HOA that can govern this. And I think if this were approved, you are going to be opening a can of worms in terms of people's interpretation of where to put a solar panel, and how big, and does it do this, does it do that? I think there's also some, what I would say, probably some incidents where the solar panel may reflect the sun onto the roadway, onto traffic, which could be, which could be a safety issue.
In that case, it would be a nuisance, but it's my understanding that the newer solar panels, the coating, I don't know, the direction, the coating or whatever that's on it is anti-fluff.
But we don't know that for sure, correct?
Correct.
And is, I'm sorry, is there a specific incident that prompted this change?
Oh, we keep getting applications for solar panels.
How many would you say in the last year?
Well, we've had two or three that have gone to the BCA, but as far as total, that would be front-facing or street-facing. I'm going to say eight to 10, something like that.
Okay, I guess my comment to that would be, with the size of the township, that doesn't seem like very many requests.
It's quite a bit.
Just my opinion.
In such a short period. Then, Mr. Molyneux, in regards to the, as far as the HOAs, you know, some of the HOAs don't allow sheds or have defense requirements.
Touche.
It's kind of, it'd be the same thing. Don't allow ground pools.
Touche. Any other questions from the Board?
I would like to entertain the idea of tabling this for further discussion for 30 to 60 days and revisiting it.
I wouldn't mind pushing it at least till the next meeting.
Okay.
This kind of caught me by surprise. I was looking at something else on the agenda, and I overlooked this completely, and want to get a better understanding of how these will look and how these will change the aesthetics of the neighborhoods, although, like you said, we don't govern that, so that's kind of out of our, but let's look at, you know, I want to get some other people's opinions, to be honest.
Okay. Again, I appreciate everybody's efforts coming tonight. We'll, we'll put a hold on to it till the next meeting, if it's the next meeting. Do you think there's enough time for you guys to decide on that?
It's about in two weeks.
Well, if you want 30 days, that's fine.
I'd like to press it for 30 days.
That's fine. No problem at all. We have you guys on tape, and we have you here, so if you have a football game, or a kids' sporting event, or something you need to get to, we've got you on tape. So thanks for coming. We'd love to have you back if you guys would like to come back, so. All right, we will, we'll table it, and then move on. So, Daryl, thanks. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight.
Absolutely. I have a motion.
We're going to motion to table that, yes, so.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnaway?
Yes.
Mr. Molyneux?
Yes. Okay. So, Daryl, do you want to get to the next one here?
Sure. So in January this year, Bill 315 passed the Ohio House. This allows townships to publish their required notices on the website and/or social media instead of the prior required newspaper notifications. So currently, Sections 1503D, 1503E, and 1601B of the Savannah Township zoning resolution require notices to be published in a newspaper of general circulation of the township. So the zoning department is requesting change in coverage to reflect Bill 315 stating the way of doing the notices. And I do want to add that for the time being, so we tend to do the newspaper notices as well, despite the zoning resolution update to reflect the current. And then, again, this was recommended for approval by the Lucas County Planning Mission and the Savannah Township zoning commission.
Any questions from the Board on that? I have a concern on it, if nobody has a question right away. My concern on this one is if you, let's say you leave, and then we'd say we have somebody that's not as good as you, and they, and these four citizens don't know about a, an issue, you know, that we normally would publicize, okay? And we come in and say, well, Section 1503B says, we have every right not to publicize it, when we've been publicizing this way for 80 years, you know, 100 years. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know if this, in my opinion, as I look at it from a broad brush, and we can, again, if you guys want to push this for more discussion with, with Daryl and Oliver, but I, it doesn't really matter. I mean, I still think, does it really matter? I mean, I think, I think, I think our newspaper, our local newspaper, Sharon of the world, and, and, you know, Toledo Business Journal, Toledo Blade, I think they need to have, I think we need to continue, and I don't want to come here and give an excuse, well, we forgot it, and, oh, by the way, Section 315 says this. I think we should still play the game the way we've always played, and I'm not, I'm not too hung up on this particular bill, but it's up to you guys, whatever you guys want to do.
There's a public hearing on this thing, and this is part of, we will incorporate your comments into the public hearing, but we should, you know, open.
Open a public hearing, yeah. My apologies. I'm a little, little off-center here today. I'll open the public hearing at 5:22, and then take whatever I said into that public hearing is public hearing.
Yeah, everyone's here and cheering, right?
Yeah.
And if there's anyone else out here that.
Is there anybody who would like to speak on behalf of Section Bill 315, for or against? Okay, I'll close the public hearing at 5:22.
You.
You.
I'm sorry. I didn't catch you quick enough.
Okay.
I totally agree with, with what you've said. I also would like to add that not everyone checks, computer checks, the website, and if that's, is it, it's my understanding that's going to be the primary way of finding out about a public hearing is the website, correct?
Right. It would be the website and/or our social media. I'm going to attach the text, but it gets out, it goes out too.
I guess I'm wondering, how many people is it going to reach if we limit the newspaper? I know you can't answer that specifically, but.
It'd be interesting to see how many get the newspaper even anymore. I think a bigger point, it should be, how do we communicate? And we've been struggling with that for a long time, and Sharon has picked up a big piece of that with the advantage, but it's still, you know, tonight was the first meeting we've had guests in for a while, and that's disappointing as a trustee, that nobody cares about the issue. So how, you know, I don't mind approving this just to have it as a tool in our belt, but we need to look at how we communicate these messages and make sure that we're reaching the right people, you know?
So correct me if I'm wrong, but really, the tool in the belt is less effort on our part to let the citizens.
Well, if something happened, you know, you wouldn't have to go through, like, what was it, the one, the one on King Road, we had an issue where the guy backed out at the last minute, then he came in the next meeting, and I forget how we were able to go around changing that meeting date for the storage units that still haven't gone up, their King Central and Southern, you know? Again, as somebody who hasn't gotten the paper in 20 years, I don't know how effective the blade is.
Well, there's the E-Blade, electronic version.
We haven't used the blade in quite a few years.
You have something to advantage.
And that is somewhat prohibited because it just comes out every two weeks, so.
Whatever you guys think. We can vote on it. You guys want to vote on it, we can vote on it.
Maybe before we vote on it, we come up with a strategy that says, these are the three areas that we'll try to get the message out. So, you know, we're doing our best to communicate it, but it's still a challenge to reach everybody.
Again, I'm just looking for less excuses. I mean, it's, this isn't one I'm hanging my hat on for my, I mean, I don't, it's not that big of a deal. I don't think, we're, this isn't rocket science. I still, I, I don't have, I still think we, I mean, we can, well, we can vote on it or push it, but I really, I think, you know, I really don't really care about House Bill 315, because I still think, maybe some people start reading the paper again. You know, maybe somebody will start being online more. I don't know. I mean, I just don't want to not, I don't want any excuses from our Board when I have a citizen here pissed off that didn't know that, that didn't know about, that they didn't find it through the media, you know, or didn't look at the channels that they've been looking at. We're an elderly population. I mean, I've been an elected official. I don't know how many times I've been on Savannah Township zoning website. I mean, and I'm on, I'm on the board. I don't know. I just, I don't, I don't care either way. So I'll do whatever you guys want to do.
I agree. I'd move to vote on it.
Okay. I'll offer Resolution to approve Sections 1503, 1503E, 1601B of the Savannah Township zoning resolution.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Johnaway?
No.
Mr. Molyneux?
No. Okay. We are here for a hearing of the public for non-agenda items. It looks like Brandon Stansley has signed in this evening. Brandon, if you come up, just like the, just like the panels, introduce yourself, who you are, and the company, and things of that nature.
Thank you for your time today. My name is Brandon Stansley, Recycle Services, 7901 West Savannah Avenue. I'd like to take the time to put my comment today to speak about a community update for our glass recycling facility in Savannah. There have been recent comments in the community made about our recycling practices in Savannah. I just want to be open and transparent from the company's standpoint about how we're continually improving our practices here in the township. So just a quick background of what Recycle Services is. We're a family-owned business that has been serving the Savannah community for over 90 years. We're located here in Savannah, Ohio, on Silica Road and West Savannah Avenue, and we currently employ over 200 employees, work very closely with the Ohio PA and other regulatory agencies. We also work with several nonprofits throughout the community, including Northwest Highway Innovation Consortium. Briefly, what we do is we are a whole-service glass recycling program. We collect bottles, jars, and windows. We transport those to a recycling facility, sort them, and clean them to high purity, and those, that glass, recycled glass, ends up at a lot of Toledo-based businesses that manufacture new glass products, like Owen Zillamore or Owens Morning. Just to highlight how big an issue glass recycling is in the United States, is, glass essentially does not decompose. So when we land the glass, which we do in a So when we land over glass, which we do in Ohio to the tune of over 90% of our glass in Ohio is sent to the landfill, that glass stays in that landfill and, and takes up that valuable airspace. What, on the other side, what the benefits of glass recycling do for the end user is that it decreases energy utilization, it decreases carbon emissions in the purposes that are heating and melting new glass products, and it reduces carbon footprint from mining new raw materials. So there's a lot of benefits from decreasing landfilling space as well as decreasing carbon emissions. And this is an overhead view of our facility here in Savannah, and the point of this slide is to illustrate that we are striving to be good industrial neighbors. If you're familiar with the way our township is laid out, which I'm sure you're aware is, this is the silica district. Silicon district has been zoned heavily industrial since the 1800s due to its really rich silica glass sand deposits. And so they would mine sand deposits, also called silica, for the glass manufacturing that was done here in Toledo. So Recycle Services is highlighted there in the green box, and that area is where we recycle our, recycle glass, and we are currently maintaining our regulatory records and permits are tracked and up to date. Excellent. So having said that, we are continually improving the facility above and beyond what is necessary for the regulatory officials with the main objective to be good neighbors and decreasing noise and emissions and odors. And how we're doing that, recently, we have two updates to make to the board, which is one, addition of a new custom designed dust collector, or what we call a glass heater. A glass heater is essentially a machine that removes moisture from the recycled glass that allows it to be utilized to make new glass bottles for new fiberglass insulation. The second thing we've done is added a new fuel source for the glass heater, which is currently a low sulfur kerosene, and this is used commonly in indoor flame burning stoves, and we switched that to utilizing liquid propane that you may be aware of using in your grills or heating your homes. The goal here is to become more efficient in the way that the unit operates as well as decrease odors. Now, these additions, it's worth noting, require a lot of lead time. We have three independent engineering firms work on each of these new updates as well as a high capital investment that we funded ourselves. And so in quick transparency, that takes time, and we're willing to share those timelines with the community if anyone is more interested in the details. Finally, I just want to thank you, the community, for hearing these updates. If there are interest in hearing more updates or concerns, I know several stakeholders, including Port Hurst's here, our police department, fire department, receive calls from the community, from the industrial district. We want to be good neighbors and comply with community concerns, whatever we can do to help the fire community to create harmony in the community, who we're willing to do. So with that, I'll close it out and take any questions.
You know, Brandon, we've had, we've had citizens call and have issues about crushing rock and blasting, you know, we, you know. Miller Brothers had an asphalt plant right across the street from you. What do they burn? What were they burning there? Because I remember that was a pretty stinky facility, you know, you know. You know, fortunately, you're kind of in an industrial zone there. I appreciate your company coming back and giving us an update of how things are coming along on your end. And what you're saying is the EPA is happy with things, and, you know, you're not having any issues from the governmental agency side of things, right?
Sure. We're close to the EPA.
I don't have any questions.
No. I, thanks for coming. A couple of times that I've gotten, you know, calls, I've called the company, and you were very quick to respond, and our fire department had brought up some glass in the road, and they were very appreciative and said, you know, how quickly you guys responded. So I appreciate you getting ahead of this and being a partner with us.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. Nobody else has signed up, Dave, so are we, so we're at the open discussion and report area reports? And this is an update from the Lucas County Health Department merger agreement. Hi, Oliver.
I just wanted to update the board that District Advisory Council, 7901, 10 to 10. And the Director of Health Department will be available to answer your questions, I might be about the proposed merger agreement. I did discuss this with the Health Department. Their, my understanding is that the resolution was intended to provide the representatives to the DAC with guidance about the agreement and how they may wish to vote at the DAC level, but just wanted to provide these updates this time of the board and guide you to answer any questions.
I, I do have a question on this. Why, why do they need us? I'm not sure. They need us to approve the more funding? Is that why they need us? Or they can, they can do it without our approval? What, what's the story, what is the, what's the real story there?
My understanding is that the resolution that was distributed to the communities, this township does not have to pass a resolution because the township has representation at the District Advisory Council level. I believe it was distributed really for purposes of transparency and to guide the representatives to the DAC here. So traditionally, each county, the board wants representative to the District Advisory Council, and they vote this part of that group.
And is that you, John?
Yep.
So again, I'm not trying to be that guy. I'm just, why would we need them if we don't, if they don't care, if they don't, if we don't need a resolution? I know John, I believe in John and what he does and the decisions he makes on behalf of the township, but if they want to come in, they can come in.
Sure. I'd reach out, talk to several of the board members and, you know, think it's the best path forward, so.
I'm coming in.
No, no. You know, I'll be at the meeting on the 10th at, is it Springfield Township Hall?
Oh, so they're not physically coming here?
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I thought you meant they're coming here. I was like, okay, all right. I get it. All right. Cool.
Yep.
All right. Great. Thanks, Oliver. At this time, I'd like to go into executive session at 5:37 to discuss pending eminent court action personnel discipline at 5:37. And Burrell, such, who else is with us here? Oliver?
We have two other meetings for the class, because we're a division of the class. Michael Zell, Aaron.
Okay. So for the, from tape, one more time, Michael Zell.
Michael Zell, and Aaron.
Hi, Aaron. Hey, Aaron, I met you last week at.
Hi, Oliver.
Your duty. Thanks for getting, thanks for getting me out of it. I appreciate it. 5:38. Second on that?
Second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Jenaway?
Yes.
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to come back out of executive session at 6:56.
Second. 6:56. And, oh, Ms. Johnson? Ms. Jenaway?
Yes.
Yes. I'll offer Resolution 25154 to terminate a probational employee, whereas Daniel Gibson has been employed with Savannah Township Road Service as the assistant foreman.
Second.
Let's see. John? You guys? Who's second?
Both of those.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Jenaway?
Yes.
Ms. Mahoney?
Yes. And I'd like to make a moment, we're done for the night at 6:57.
Second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Jenaway?
Yes.
Yes. All right. All righty. Thanks, everyone.